Hey everybody, welcome back for a live study session with Nurse Eunice. In today's video, we are discussing vital signs. And yes, I'm currently live streaming the TikTok while I'm also recording the content for YouTube. And so for my TikTok audience, if you want to see the slides, you gotta go to YouTube. My YouTube audience, if you want to watch it live right now, you're not gonna go to TikTok. And anyway, in my description area, you should be able to find both on both TikTok and on YouTube. You can look for my name, it is Eunice Mathis. So let's begin, everybody. Look, you can scan this QR code, and when you scan a QR code, you're gonna get your vital signs bundle. That is right. It comes with colorful infographics. You're going to receive a practice test, and you're going to receive the slides from this video. So $7, you invest in me, I invest in you, and that's how we keep supporting each other and learning. So let's talk about vital signs. When we mentioned vital signs, what exactly are we speaking of? And so vital signs are one of the most important skills that every nursing assistant, every CNA must learn. They include blood pressure, heart rate, pulse, respiration, temperature, and then sometimes you'll even hear us say pain. And so just depends on where you are working. But these numbers tell us how a patient's body is working and if something might be wrong. For nursing assistants, knowing how to check the vital signs is only half of the job. You must also record them correctly. Accurate documentation helps the nurse and the rest of the medical team make safe decisions about patient care. If vital signs are written down wrong or not reported at all, the patient's health could be at risk. Learning and practicing vital signs will not only help you pass your exam, because some of you all are so focused on passing your exams, that I have to remind you that after you pass your exam, you're taking care of humans. And so you have to know your vital signs, not just to pass the test, but to let me know if something is going wrong with your patient. And so you learning your vital signs makes you a stronger and more trusted member of the healthcare team. There are four essential vital signs, and we're gonna discuss them all. We have the pulse, which is the heartbeat rate. So every time the heart pumps, you're gonna feel pulsations throughout the body. So heartbeat, it measures, and it is measured in beats per minute. And so if you're taking notes, whenever you write down pulse, another term that we could use would be heart rate or heartbeat. And then whenever we document it, we put BPM behind it, and that stands for beats per minute. Another vital sign would be respiration, or the rate at which your patient is breathing. And so this also, whenever we measure it, we say BPM. But for this one for breathing, instead of it being beats per minute, it is breaths per minute. Another vital sign would be temperature, and so that's body heat. It's gonna tell us if our patient is hypothermic or hyperthermic. If they're hyper, meaning that the temperature is higher than normal, that could mean they have a fever, which could be an indication of an infection. So everything that you do is so important because you doing these vital signs helps to keep your patients safe, and you'll know when to alert your nurse. And finally, the big one, because you all, oh, all want to know about blood pressures. How do I perform a blood pressure? I got you. And so with the blood pressure, every time the heart beats, there is an amount of pressure or force that's going against the arterial walls. And so we're gonna break down systolic versus diastolic in a few slides. But yes, in this video, we're gonna cover all of your essential vital signs. And if you've been here this long, go ahead, you know what I asked for. Go ahead and help a nurse out, we need thumbs up, we need likes. Let the algorithm know that you got this crazy nurse over here who gives out all this free knowledge to help you pass your test, and that you appreciate her. So normal vital signs, they may actually change with age, sex, weight, exercise, and overall health conditions. So these measurements may be monitored continuously to check an individual's level of physical function. So when you're in your facilities, if you're in an acute care facility such as a hospital, so acute is a new illness, a new condition. You could be monitoring vital signs if they're really sick every two minutes, every five minutes. We have these devices, they call it Dynamix, where you can just set the frequency. But depending on how sick they are, will change how frequently we are monitoring their vital signs. If it's someone who has a chronic condition who is stable, well, that's when they may do a vital sign every four hours if they're on a heart floor or a telemetry unit. Or if they're just regular patient, maybe they have diabetes, no heart conditions. Their vital signs may be every shift. So you reading and understanding your care plan, your patient's orders is going to be vital because that's gonna tell you how frequently you're gonna be doing the vital signs. And here are our normal vital sign ranges. For the average healthy adult, look, if you don't have pen and paper yet, go get pen and paper. Go ahead and get it. So for an average healthy adult, the numbers you see on the screen are the standard ranges. And so this is for normal average adults. A lot of your patients are not normal because they have chronic conditions. So if you don't see a nurse freaking out when you come and tell them something, just say, hey, Eunice, I told you that the vital signs were abnormal, and I don't see that you're going to the patient right away. Can you tell me why? And so sometimes if a patient already has a heart rate that's higher than normal, let's say a patient's heart rate at rest is 100, and we'll go through the normals. When their heart rate gets up to 110 because they walked to the bathroom, unless they're having symptoms, your nurse may not be rushing to the room because remember, this patient already had a higher, their heart rate was on the higher end, even though it was normal. And now what I'd be concerned about was does it decline? Does it return to a normal state after this person's at rest? And if the answer is no, that's when you're gonna see me be a little more concerned. But write these numbers down. For a pulse, it is 60 up to 100 beats per minute. So when I ask you all for ranges, you all like to give me one number. A range is not one number, a range is two numbers. So pulse rate or heart rate for an adult is 60 up to 100 beats per minute. The respiratory rate, or how fast someone breathes, that range is from 12 to 20. The top number of the blood pressure, so a normal blood pressure reading is top number slash bottom number. Systolic slash diastolic. So we'll say that a normal blood pressure is 120 over 80. But that really doesn't tell you much about the two individual numbers. So this is something, this is just a rule of thumb. Your systolic blood pressure, the normal range is 100 up to 130, until your instructor, until your nursing school tells you otherwise. Normal is 100 to 130, but you won't see your nurses respond or act until that systolic blood pressure gets up to 140. So let's talk about 130 to 140. 130 to 140 is known as pre-hypertension. So 100 to 130, top number, your patient's good. 130 to 140, if they don't have any other symptoms, we're just gonna continue to monitor. If that top number is greater than 140, we consider that hypertension. And now for your diastolic blood pressure, the range, or that would be the lower number, the range is 60 up to 80, so 60 to 80. And you may not see your nurse really moving fast if that bottom number is 58 because usually for the diastolic blood pressure, if we give them some water, they could be dehydrated. That number's gonna go up. Alright, and so now let's talk about temperatures. The average temperature is 98.6. And during COVID, we were checking everyone's temperatures. Like everybody who came into our office, we had to do a temperature check because if they had a fever, they couldn't be in our class. And so I found then that most went to, why? Because we have air conditioning building. And so even though the average is 98.6, remember that your task isn't just a global average temperature is 98.6, but your range would be 97.6 up to 99.6. Remember, air conditioning, these facilities are cold, and so most of your patients are gonna be around 98, just based off of the environment of their room. For your temperature measurement, your thermometers measure the temperatures. And so there are different types of thermometers based upon where you're going to be. So different routes include the mouth, that would be the most common, except for when we have, you know, to wear masks due to certain respiratory conditions. So the mouth is the most common way to measure a temperature. And then they have the forehead or the thermal scanners. In some of your clinical care units, they will use a rectal thermometer. Your patient has to be really, really sick for us to perform a rectal temperature on them because there is a risk of us perforating, of us going through their intestines. So and then whenever you are utilizing a rectal temperature, you're only put of the reasons I just told you. Another way in which we can take the temperature would be via the ear, and that is called tympanic. And now everybody repeat after me, when we take the temperature under the arm, that is called an axillary temperature, so not auxiliary. I need you to say your words right. So if you're talking to me, and I'm gonna correct you because I need for you to sound knowledgeable and professional. So it's not an auxiliary temperature, it is an axillary temperature. An axillary temperature is a temperature obtained. Additional terms that you need to know as it relates to a temperature would be febrile. When we say that a person is febrile, that means that their temperature is higher than 99.6, that is the presence of a fever. But how the patient presents versus how the nurses and the doctors respond are two different things. For a normal average adult, if their temperature is 99.6, we're gonna give them fluids, give them some talus. Ask nicely, someone's gonna explain it to you. Another term you wanna know about is afebrile. A, anytime you see the prefix A in front of the word, that means the lack or the absence of. So afebrile is the opposite of being febrile. Afebrile is the lack of a fever or the absence of. And I have some additional temperature guidelines for you. The oral temperature, as we mentioned before, is the most common measurement method, but certain patients require alternative approaches for accurate readings. For an example, you're going to avoid oral temperatures. You're not gonna use the probe that goes under the tongue for infants. You would also not perform an oral temperature on a patient with facial, neck, nose, or mouth injuries, and you're trying to do an oral temperature. No, you can do a thermal, a tympanic, or axillary temperature. Certain oxygen devices, if someone has an oxygen mask going, use one of those other routes. If someone has a nasogastric tube, they have a tube going through their nose down into their stomach. So that means that they're not right now breathing out of their nose, they're breathing out of their mouth. And so if a patient has a nasogastric tube, do not perform an oral temperature. And then finally, if your patient has an altered mental status, if they're confused, they can bite down on it, they can injure themselves, do not put anything in their mouth. Let's talk about the importance of timing. If your patient has eaten, drank, or smoked, I know what you do in your facilities, I'm teaching you 100% textbook. If they have done anything to alter the temperature of their mouth, you're supposed to wait 30 minutes before you re-attempt an oral temperature. Alright, and so I hope you learned something. If you did, give us a heart, give us a like, give us a thumbs up. And on this slide, which of course you can download if you purchase our bundle, it goes through the procedures for actually taking an oral temperature. And now we're gonna proceed to the pulse skill. And so let's talk about the pulse again. The normal adult pulse rate ranges, as we said before, what are those two numbers? Yes, if you said 60 up to 100 beats per minute, you're absolutely right. The radial pulse, and I'm gonna try to turn on my camera here, it looks like there's a little bit of a delay. The radial pulse, base of the thumb at the wrist. Remember, you cannot take a pulse with your thumb because your thumb has its own pulse. So you're gonna use two or three fingers, and you're gonna feel those palpations, those pulsations against your fingers, and that would be the pulse. So here's proper technique. You're gonna use the first two or three fingers, again, never the thumb. You're gonna count for a full 60 seconds. Look, I don't care what they do in your facilities, they count for 15 seconds multiplied by four. Especially when you're taking your CNA test. You are supposed to count a pulse for a full 60 seconds. That will allow you to assess for the strength, the regularity, and the character. What do we mean by the character? Let's say a person's dehydrated, their pulse is gonna be weak. But if they're well hydrated, well, then they may have a bounding pulse. The apical pulse is something that I'm just mentioning here. Usually your CNAs will not be determining the apical pulse because it requires a stethoscope. But for all of my CNAs who are nursing students, you have to know about the apical pulse. And so that is how, before we give medications, especially cardiac medications, we take our stethoscope to the chest, and we listen for one full minute at the apex of the heart. The apical pulse is at the strongest point of the heart, AKA the apex. And so for more accurate heart rate measurement, taking over the patient's heart rate, excuse me, taking over the patient's apex, you're gonna utilize your stethoscope. And this is best used for patients with irregular heart rates, such as those who have atrial fibrillation, and also infants. Again, for your CNA test, no one is asking you to use a stethoscope and to perform an apical pulse. But I have to tell you what the apical pulse is, since we're talking about doing the pulse assessment. For your test, is the radial pulse only? I did not discuss the carotid pulse. The reason why I didn't discuss it is because that's usually discussed during CPR. If your patient's talking to you, you do not go for their carotid pulse. You will go for the carotid pulse whenever the patient is unresponsive. So remember, the carotid pulse or those neck pulses are for people who are unresponsive, and you think you're about to perform CPR. If they're talking to you, if they're moving, it's gonna be a radial pulse. Here are some key terms for heart rates, okay? So we talked about key terms for fevers, let's talk about some key terms for your heart rates. A term that you're gonna need to know is bradycardia. And when you look at the slide, I have a picture of a turtle, why? Because bradycardia means that the heart is moving slowly. So bradycardia is defined as a pulse rate below 60 beats per minute. Causes may include aging, heart, certainty. Next would be tachycardia. So tachy, look, I have an image of a rabbit. Because tachy means fast, so tachy means fast. So it's faster than the turtle. Tachycardia is characterized by a pulse rate exceeding 100 beats per minute. This can result from factors such as fever, anxiety, stress, exercise, anemia, or underlying cardiac conditions like arrhythmias or abnormal heart rhythm. Identifying the root cause is essential for appropriate management and complication prevention. You're letting that nurse know, hey, this person's heart rate is 120, that means they have tachycardia. And now your nurse will go in and do the rest of the assessment. Cardiac arrest, notice I have an image there with a line through it. Cardiac arrest, arrest means to stop. So that means the heart has stopped. Whenever someone's in cardiac arrest, it is a sudden loss of heart function, typically due to an electrical disturbance that disrupts the heart's pumping ability. Potential causes include severe arrhythmias, heart attacks, trauma, electrolyte imbalances, etc. Immediate intervention, including CPR and defibrillation. Okay, are you okay? And as you're tapping and you're shouting, and there's no response, you're gonna immediately reach over that bed and hit that, and you're gonna scream out, help. Wow, cuz all this moves really fast. Feeling for the carotid artery, and if you're outside of ICU or outside of ER, no nurse can get in that room within 10 seconds. Some reactions on your patient. Alright, let's go to our next one. So on this next slide, it gives you the actual steps in order for you to take an accurate pulse. I'm not gonna discuss it during this video, but I do want you to stay on this test on vital signs. Yes, you know, Eunice, you know me, I'm your favorite nurse buddy, and it wouldn't be right if I didn't quiz you at the end of this. Now we're back to respirations, okay? And so with respirations, the respiratory assessment involves measuring the rate, rhythm, and depth of their breathing pattern. One respiration, excuse me, one inspiration, that means you're taking a breath in. Everyone take a deep breath in with me. And then one expiration, let it out. Those two movements equals one respiration. So whenever you're watching a person's chest rise and fall, you're not counting every movement, you're either counting every time they breathe in, or every time they exhale. That means the lack of. So acne is the complete absence of breathing. Oh, we're about to perform CPR, this patient's gonna be intubated. If we can't get their breathing regulated. So acne is the complete absence of breathing. It may result from reduced stimuli to brain's respiratory centers. And so a reason that we have lately, and the fentanyl epidemic. And so whenever we have a patient, especially if we think they've been using drugs, if we have a patient who's in respiratory compromise, you're gonna see us give them naloxone or Narcan. And so if we don't do something to reverse the effects of those drugs on the brain level, it's going to stop that person from prefixes. This one, tachy, remember the rabbit? But now instead of being tachycardia, it's tachypnea. And so what do you think that refers to? That is right, that means when they're breathing faster than normal. So tachypnea refers to a respiratory rate that is greater than 20 breaths per minute at rest. So now they're breathing 28 breaths per minute, and they have your patients are gonna need chance to get stable again. So if you're gonna do those vital signs, you do it before you get them up, unless the doctor has requested otherwise. So going back to tachypnea. So tachypnea refers to a respiratory rate that is greater than 20 breaths per minute while at rest. And so causes of tachypnea can include anxiety, pain, or lung conditions. Alright, this one is really hard for me to pronounce. Notice how it has Brady in front of it, but it's pronounced bradypnea. Like, who made that word up? Anyway, bradypnea refers to decreased respiration. So that means that when the respiration rate is less than 12. And that can occur when a person's sleeping, especially if your nurse engaged them a sleeping pill and whatever else they requested for. So bradypnea can occur during sleep. Let's think about sleep apnea, so it could be related to certain diseases. I just mentioned sedations, getting closer to expiration or death. Their body systems are gonna start not working as well. And so if someone's on hospice, they're probably gonna have bradypnea. Alright, and then the last one is dyspnea. And so DYS in front of a word, that prefix stands for pain or difficulty. So dyspnea is difficulty or label breathing, often associated with respiratory or cardiac conditions. That's right, if the heart isn't pumping, the blood isn't moving, the fluids are gonna back up into the lungs. And so cardiac conditions can cause respiratory issues too. If you're learning a lot, go ahead and give me that thumbs up. I'm asking for it, I need some hearts if you're on TikTok. Alright, and let's go to our next one. Let's talk about how to perform the respiratory skill. And so when you're taking your tests, I'm not gonna go step by step because I have videos on all of this. So whenever you're taking your tests, you're not gonna be doing the pulse and the respiration as one skill. These are two separate skills that require a whole knock introduction. Hey, I'm here to take your pulse. You will perform the pulse count for one full minute. Make sure you document, do all those closing things, such as washing your hands, give them the call bell, open the curtain, etc. And now if by some chance, your second skill is respiration, you have to knock through that whole breathing and introduction all over again. Make sure you wash your hands. But now instead of telling the person that you're gonna be counting their respiratory rate, you're instead going to tell them that you are there to take their vital signs. Because if the person knows that you are gonna be counting their respirations, they're not gonna breathe normally, they're watching you, watch them, that's not good. So respirations, we have to keep the element of surprise. So during your task, if you see your nurse hold the resident's wrist, but your skills card said respirations, don't get tricked. She is not taking that person's pulse. What she's doing is keeping the element of surprise. She's trying to trick that person into making them think that she's actually counting their pulse rate. But instead, if your paper said respiration, you two are only counting the respiratory rate for one full minute. And don't forget that one inhalation plus one exhalation equals one respiration. Right, and now we're ready for the big one. We are finally to the fundamentals of blood pressure. And so if you remember, the systolic range was from what to what? Give you a few moments to put that into the chat. What is the range for the systolic blood pressure? Yeah, I see some correct responses. So if you said 100 to 130, questionably 140, I'm going to accept that because no nurse is going to like freak out if a patient's systolic blood pressure is 136. Alright, so let's just go back and cover this part again. Blood pressure measures the force exerted by blood on peripheral arterial walls. And this expressed in millimeters of mercury. So when you see that MMHG, that means millimeters of mercury. And then your blood pressure consists of two components, measured during the cardiac cycle. And so the first would be that top number, the high number. So when you think about systolic, think about the sky. Now I wanna turn my camera on so you all can see that. When you think about the systolic blood pressure, think about the sky. So the number that's towards the sky, or the higher number would be the systolic pressure. And so internally, that is heart is pumping blood. When it's taking the blood from the heart and pushing it towards the body, that is the systolic blood pressure. And now your diastolic blood pressure is the lowest reading. And so when you think of diastolic, think down. So systolic would be the top number, that's the high number, the diastolic would be the down number. And so that diastolic range was from 60 to 80, but your nurses won't freak out if that patient's diastolic pressure is 54. So while you're panicking, your nurse is like, and how is the patient presenting? And you're like, oh, she's fine, she's watching TV with no complaints. So we do still sometimes give our patients grace with their numbers, but I want you to understand a little bit more about the numbers. So that lower blood pressure, that diastolic pressure is when the heart relaxes. So whenever you think about a heart, it pumps, so it contracts, it squeezes the blood out, and then it gives it the time to refill. So that refill is the relaxation, and that is diastolic. Pump, systolic, diastolic, systolic, diastolic. Whenever it opens back up to draw more blood in, that is when it is resting. And so factors that can temporarily raise blood pressure include stress, smoking, exercise, full bladder, caffeine. Ooh, if I can go on my little nurse's rant right now, I am tired of seeing you all drinking Monsters and Red Bulls and everything else. Y'all are killing y'all hearts at an early age. Look, if you wanna look like me at almost 50, I'm going to need for you to cut back on some of that caffeine. You need to get some sleep, but you can't get sleep because you got all the caffeine in your system, it is a vicious cycle. And then certain medications can also alter the blood pressure. And don't forget pain, yes, if a person's in pain, their blood pressure levels are gonna be elevated. And just like we did before, we had key terms for each of the vital signs, we have key terms for the blood pressure. And so hypertension, let's talk about those prefixes. When you see hyper in front of a word, that means that it is higher than normal. So persistently elevated blood pressure significantly increases the risk of heart disease and stroke. So persistently elevated blood pressure significantly increases the risk of heart disease and stroke. So when we were talking about hypertension, that means that blood, person's blood pressure is persistently above one forty over eighty. Hypo, that prefix in front of a word means lower than normal. So when a patient is hypotensive or if they have hypotension, that's a normally low blood pressure, potentially causes symptoms like dizziness and fainting. So if you're taking your patient's blood pressure and it's less than one hundred over sixty, you send them over to the edge of the bed, well, let me just rephrase that, you sit all of your patients up at the edge of the bed before you stand them up. Give their body time to get rebalanced equilibrium. Make sure they have their shoes or their, um, their socks that have the little skinnies on the bottom. And then you stand them up and you ask, are you dizzy? And if that person says yes, you sit their butt back down in that bed, get them in the bed and call a nurse. Because they could become hypotensive with just position changes, which is the next term that we're going to talk about, orthostatic or positional hypotension. And so an orthostatic hypotensive episode occurs when there is a sudden drop in blood pressure upon standing. And that's going to lead to lightheadedness and falls. So if you want to prevent your patients from having orthostatic hypotension, just never get them up out of bed and take them to the bathroom. You do it in phases, you transition them, sit them up, put their shoes on, stand them up, um, see how they're feeling, if they don't feel good, they go back to the bed and you get them a bedpan instead. Yeah, we're going to keep them safe. Alright, let's talk about this terminology. Again, for healthy adults, there are your ranges there for the systolic and a diastolic blood pressure. And then it talks about what would indicate hypertension. And now, regular monitoring is crucial for early detection and management of cardiovascular risk, as maintaining blood pressure within these optimal ranges reduces the strain on the heart and arteries, thereby promoting a long-term cardiovascular health. That's right, CNAs, you all help to keep our patients safe and their hearts healthy. And so this screen talks about the actual cuff and the placement of the cuff. Remember, the arm should always be at the heart level, you shouldn't have their feet or their legs crossed. But if you use a cuff that is too small, you're going to get a falsely high reading. If you use a cuff, a cuff that is too big, you're going to get a false low reading. So I want you to look at this image whenever you download the documents because, excuse me. If you have a really petite patient, an elderly patient who's eighty-eight pounds or ninety pounds, and you put that huge, extra-large cuff on her, of course you're going to get an inaccurate reading. So your cuffs, your blood pressure devices have different cuff sizes. You want to make sure you have the right cuff size for the, for the right patient. And this one goes step by step. Yes, I have a video on my YouTube channel, and I'm sure I may have one on TikTok too, that talks about not only how to perform a blood pressure reading. Some of you all don't know how to read the gauge. And if you can't read the gauge, I have nurses who don't know how to read it. If you're giving me an odd number, but you're doing a manual blood pressure, so a manual blood pressure actually consists of you using a stethoscope and a spirometer. Say it with me, spirometer. That is the medical term for a blood pressure cuff. And if you are using a manual blood pressure cuff and you give me an odd number, that means you don't know what you're doing, you don't know how to read your gauge. A machine can give you an odd number, but a human cannot. There are no odd numbers on the gauge of the spirometer. There are lines and each line represents an increment of two. And so I want you to read through this. Don't forget to document everything, you all. So during your CNA test, yes, you have to document your findings. Yes, you have to wash your hands before and after your skills. And on the screen, when you look there, you can go ahead and take your phone out, you can hover, you can scan that QR code. And that's going to take you to our CNA skills playlist step by step. And lastly, you all, don't forget about our vital signs bundle. So yes, I'm ending this video now and coming right back on. And we're going to do our vital signs practice test. So you all, you know, I love you, I appreciate you, I wish you much success. Keep being awesome caregivers and I will see you in the next video. Bye, everybody.